I'm leaving the meeting because you're recording.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us on our OJ Town Hall. We'll just give it maybe one more minute because we have some people in the waiting room still. Just a few housekeeping notes. If you if your microphone is on, we ask that you mute it unless you need to ask a question. Because there are quite a number of people in the room, just to avoid any feedback. More than people. Any of you have any questions, please feel free to put them in the chat. We'll be monitoring that and answering them there as well as questions taken on the call. This town hall is being recorded. So if you have if you miss anything or you need to go back and double check anything, this will be posted on our website later this week. Okay, so let's get started. Thank you, everyone, for joining us again for our town hall. Tonight, we'll be talking about return to play and our outdoor programs for the upcoming months. On the call with us tonight, I'm Kelvin, Operations Lead for Ontario Volleyball, do a lot of the beach stuff and roughing and coaching stuff. We also have Alicia Lydum, the Director of Volleyball Operations, Suzanne Wallace, Manager of Beach Programs, and Joanne Lubachich, our Executive Director, and they'll be going over the information for us tonight. So now I'll hand it over to Joanne, and then she's going to go over some return to play stuff before Suzanne takes it away with some of our beach programs for the summer.
All right. Thank you, Kelvin. Yeah, I just wanted to run a quickly through our agenda. You can see my screen. Awesome. So we wanted to go through the regulations, the Ontario roadmap to reopening and how that relates to volleyball. And then Suzanne and her team will get into how the outdoor volleyball will happen this year. We're going to be really positive with that, how it will happen and how it will happen following the government regulations and some Q and A. And then also, there's some future town halls also scheduled coming up related to indoor and some other topics. The, as Kelvin said, feel free, as we're presenting, throw your questions in the chat. Alicia's really quick on the trigger on putting throwing answers back in there. And then we'll also make sure at the end if there's any further to review or go over any other questions. So let's get right into it. So our roadmap, our roadmap to reopen, as we know, the province is using a three-step approach. I'm not going to go into all the details of the province, but we do want to relate to volleyball and what it means as far as what we are allowed to do under the government regulations. Under step one, outdoor training can happen. So we did want to get through our return to play protocol in detail on relation to the government regulations for step one. Step two is also only outdoor activity. And step three is when indoor activity gets added. So as you can see from our timelines, we're really hoping that we're very optimistic that we will get into step two. By July 2, I'm sure some of you heard the news where there was some asks to move earlier, but there wasn't a lot of move from that from the public health. So we are still hoping that July 2 will be the day that we get into step two. Because we do need to get into step two in order for Suzanne to operate her beach competitions. So that is the key, the key piece for there. But this is our little plug of, as you can see from step one, two, and three, there's targets around vaccinations. It's like the sooner you can get it, the sooner we can get into these steps. Please, this is our plug, please get your vaccine, because that does mean we get to move into the further steps, obviously along with a lot of other, I'm simplifying it, but with a lot of other health factors, and we do want everyone to be safe. So with with the rules, we do know that in step one, it's a very small group. And then when we get to step two, it does say that we'll get into some 25 people. But then step three, it doesn't even say the gathering sizes yet. So we don't know what those regulations will be. But we just wanted to share with you that we are really looking forward to step two as it will get us into some competitions. But let's get into what it is we can do now. In the meantime, for the next couple of weeks, and what our return to play protocol looks like. So over, I don't know how many return to play protocol town halls we've done, ladies, but seems like it's been a lot. And so again, this is another rendition of the return to play is every time we have to make sure that we've picked up all the government regulations and that we're operating legally. And how it adapts to volleyball. We do share our return to play protocols with public health authorities. In specific, this one, it'll be when when we have questions and the areas that we're locating. And I encourage you to share a return to play with your local public health. If you have any questions, if you if they have any questions, what they have on the return to play, don't hesitate to contact us. We're happy to help the public health authorities get through any of those questions. We did have some last summer when some were worried about, you know, some of our return to play. But once we explained how we were meeting the regulations and how we were keeping it, mitigating risks and keeping people safe, they did allow the competitions to continue. So don't hesitate to contact us if you have any questions from your public health. When we get into our insurance, our insurance does approve our our RTP, our return to play protocol. We have seeked out legal opinion and advice on on our regulations and relating them into our return to play. We do want to keep in mind that you do need to follow the return to play or else the activity is illegal. That's the one tip the insurance always states to us, operate legally or you do not have insurance. So that is, they are very clear with us about share the return to play protocol with your facilities, your permit issuers. That is how they are able to operate legally, that there is a return to play protocol in place, that the sport is allowed to operate in their facility. Again, our insurance stresses with us, make sure that you have your permits or you're trespassing and operating illegally. Volleyball can is easiest one out of this. We're in their step two progression of return to play, which is a training group that's operating just with a small number of athletes. And then the next group moves into some small competitions, which would correlate with our step two. So how do we comply? We have this big, long list. This is the same list we've had with our other return to play protocols. This is something where I really, I know it's not easy to operate at this time. I appreciate all the hosts and our clubs that do take in, take the time to plan, learn our return to play, make sure that they're getting the education plans out, they're posting their protocols. A big piece of your participants and your parents' confidence in coming back to participate safely is that you have these in place and that you're sharing this information. This is where posts on your website. The waivers relating to COVID, the athletes, your coaches, they would have completed it through the registration system. The daily health screening that gets updated on a regular basis along with the return to play protocol. So please use the latest version and make sure that that's done before every session with your athletes and your coaches. And then participant tracking, your contact tracing, it is still a government required requirement to make sure that you have that done. We do recommend that you keep those lists for at least a month to keep it. That's kind of the the recommendation of this time. And then just make sure you understand how the programming needs to be modified in order to operate. So our step one government regulations, as we stated, there's no indoor, unfortunately, at this time. An indoor facility, they can be used for, you know, Washington's first aid, but there can't be any sport happening in them. So the outdoor team sport training only is permitted. And so just to be clear, they're very clear in the regulations, they use the words games and scrimmage games, but they are not allowed to happen. So it is only training that is allowed to happen. So the gathering size of your groups, it is a limit of 10. The parent or guardian are allowed to attend for their minor athlete as as obviously supervising for their minor athlete, sorry. But at all times, the three meter physical distance must be able to be maintained. And as far as whether the coach is involved in the tent or not, that's actually been a question. That it is checked with your facility. We recommend that you do keep your coach within the limit of 10 because that is the gathering size of the province. But it is unclear because, as you know, from other versions of the regulation, the coach didn't include in the the sport activity number. In this one, it just, it does say 10 patrons. So the legal advice is that the coach is included. But check with your facility. And also check with your facility as far as managing if you have multiple groups of 10. And making sure that your groups of 10 are separate, that they're able to be spaced out, that you're staggering your start times. Their exit and entry into the area and that you are always able to maintain three meters physical distance. So just to cover off back, you know, the how the outdoor activity training can happen right now. Keep in mind, three meters physical distancing must be maintained. No gameplay leagues, league play are permitted. There isn't a set limit to the number of athletes on the court. We are going to leave that to the coaches to make sure that the athletes can maintain their three meters physical distance. I mean, most of our our groups, we train two on two, so it's fine. But if you have four athletes on each side and two are waiting around, that's fine. There is no travel limitation with in the regulations right now within Ontario. So you will be able to travel to the to the to the beach tour events that Susan has scheduled. And masks are required to be worn by all individuals, except while the athletes are on the court doing their training while they're in while they're playing, they can remove their masks. But once they come off the courts and the coaches coaching masks are on. So just to review a bit of that with the maintaining our physical distance and our return to play. We just, we we can't stress enough, the regulations are very clear that three meters physical distance is the requirement. So keep in mind to eliminate the high fives, the handshakes, don't huddle the athletes. If coaches are instructing, make sure that the athletes do maintain some space. Anyone off court is also maintaining their distance. And you're not required to use every other court, but just make sure there's ample space between the courts if you are going to have side by side courts in action. And then it's always good if you can utilize some visual cues to reminder of the the space. I think we're pretty used to it by now, but just for sometimes on some of the drills and different activities you're doing. So one, one last piece of our of our roadmap and the government reopening plan is, this is all the information we have. So this is, this is the, this is the struggle of trying to plan. And I I'm sure everyone is really frustrated, obviously, on wanting to reopen and and get things going. But this, this is the information that we are planning our summer on. So we don't know how much, how quickly step two will open up any further than 25 people for outdoor gatherings. And that the outdoor sport leagues will be able to happen, no indoor, but our amateur athletes will be able to have competitions. So Suzanne and her team have been planning diligently around that and how they can run events for for our community. But there is still going to be some more, just lots of details still to come as far as Ontario Championships further down the road. I mean, they don't, they don't know what the gathering sizes are, where they're going to be able to host. Ash Bridges hasn't given us permits for the weekend. So there's a lot of details that the team is still diligently working on. So we really appreciate all of your patience as we continue to plan these. But they do have a great schedule already planned, set up and some modified competitions that we know successfully from last year that they will be able to run. And so again, once we know more information, we will share it, we will have published a step to return to play protocol. Once we get some government regulations, we are fingers crossed that that way we'll get some more of that information before. But a lot of times we don't get the regulations until they're published after we're actually in step two. So like when something commences. So as far as step three, we don't even have any more information other than that the gathering sizes will be increased and some indoor activity will start to be able to happen. So it's again, this is what we're working with. And when we know more, we will share more. And we will continue to run as much volleyball as we can in the province for our community. And it's great when we get to see the kids out there having an awesome time. So that is our return to play. And is there any questions that you need to hammer through, Alicia?
Yeah, there are a couple of questions that came up in the chat. Joanne, the first one was just for clarification. If you have 10 minors, you can have one parent per minor, therefore your total gathering size is 20.
The minor can have their parent or guardian supervise be present. But just keep in mind that they have to be able to maintain the physical distance. So if it's a smaller venue or, I mean, it's outdoor, right? So it's great. You can, you can, you know, step away and be a little further. But yes, that is, that's accurate.
Awesome. And the second question is, what is the definition of a day camp? And are indoor volleyball or is indoor volleyball allowed at a day camp?
Um, a day camp would have to follow the all the guidelines and regulations set out by the medical officers for day camps. The day camps still have to follow the rules of the return to play for that sport. So since indoor volleyball is not allowed per the step one and even step two, because there's no indoor sports, indoor volleyball wouldn't be allowed in a day camp activity. And you would have to be insured as a decamp and running as a decamp. But yes.
Thank you. That's all the questions we have for a return to play. If there are no other questions, I'll turn it over to Suzanne and then she can talk about the beach tour.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelvin. Um, okay, so as Joanne said, we still don't have government regulations for step two. So this is our plan as of right now. It could change come step two regulation release date. So this is what we're going to run with right now. Currently, we have it scheduled. So events will begin the weekend of July 10 and will pretty much run every weekend until the end of August. Registration will open next week, Monday, June 28 on MRS. And all of the dates and age splits for the regular beach tour season is posted on our website. You can see the link right there. And athletes will only have to purchase a beach recreational membership. So this year, because there's no nationals, you are not required, athletes are not required to have a beach competitive membership. You just need to have the beach recreational membership. Jo, you can go to the next slide. Um, just to reiterate some of the points, we have discussed this in our previous beach updates town halls. But just so everyone is aware kind of what we're claiming and what is expected. So obviously, all the return to play protocols will be followed, like Joanne said. They will need to sign off on their COVID waivers, complete their contact tracing, as well as daily health screening questionnaire. The one thing that did change this year compared to last year is that even the one spectator that is allowed to be there with the athlete, they will also need to complete the daily health screening questionnaire. And obviously, no warmups can begin for athletes until they check in and they've completed all of the above. Event format. So from our friendlies from last year with the waves, we have a morning wave and an afternoon wave. We are continuing with that just to limit the exposure time of the athletes, you know, at our facilities, we are keeping it. You know, we're just having a condensed tournament, pretty much. They'll still pretty much get the same amount of matches as they would, but we're just condensing it into either a morning or an afternoon. All age groups will be offered this year. One of the things during the friendlies, we just offered a select few age groups, but we will be offering all age groups this year. And it will be our 16 month age category instead of the chronological age that we did report on earlier. So we are working on updating our handbook because there are quite a few things that need to be updated for this year, just based on the changes and our start dates. So our handbook will be posted with the these changes as soon as we can. So as I said, it will be condensed pool play and playoff brackets. And as you can see from the chart on the right, they'll just play a brief round robin with 30 minute two sets, break times in between. The one thing to notice too is that everybody plays playoffs. So no matter if you lose first round, you will still be playing in the second round of playoffs. So you're playing the whole time that you're there. And cancellation weather policy, if there is lightning, the tournament will be canceled immediately. And whether or not you get so many matches into the event is whether or not a transfer or refund will be possible. And that's going to be updated in our handbook in the weeks to come. So we will be awarding points. That is one thing that is different from last year, whereas the friendlies was just come out and play. This year, we will be doing playoffs and having points for your rankings. There is no difference in OV beach tour compared to satellite events, because we do not have access to Ash Bridges, unfortunately, this year at this time. All venues will be awarding the same points. And teams will obviously be ranked on their 2019 points or their 2021, whichever is available. So if they've already played in an event, then obviously we'll use their current points. As I said, playoff brackets are broken down into four teams max. Thanks, Jo. Yeah, the winner of the first round will play off for first and second in their tier. And then obviously, the losers will play off for third and fourth. The one nice thing with this with these small playoff brackets and also playing out all of the playoff matches is that each team will then have a specific rank for rankings. So all matches will be self refereed. So players will be I think we lost, Sue. Kelvin, do you want to jump in? On site this year at all events and they will assist with rule clarification and
We lost you for this.
Oh, sorry.
So where did we lose her?
One slide ahead. I think we were at all matches will be self rest.
Okay, so you didn't hear anything after that? Darn it, I was on a roll too. Okay, I'll try it again. Um, so all matches will be self refereed. If you notice from the chart two slides ago, where we were talking about the event format. If you're in a pool of four teams, you're playing both, all four teams are playing at the same time. So obviously, there's no teams to be scoring for you or doing the roughing. So players will be responsible for making their own calls and keeping score. There will still be an OVA referee on site and they can assist with rule clarification during round robin and will also be officiating some matches during playoffs. No OVA coaching will be allowed on the beach this year, just to help reduce the number of people on the playing field, just because of our max gathering sizes. As well as we would like coaching to take place more at the training facility rather than at tournaments. Can you guys hear me okay? Good, okay. So, um, as Joanne mentioned before too, Beach Nationals unfortunately is canceled for 2021. Therefore, we have decided to push back Ontario Championships. We still would like to run Ontario Championships to some capacity. So we have pushed it back to the August 21, 22, as well as 2029 weekends. We do not have access at this time for Ash Bridges on weekends. So we're still finalizing venues, event guidelines, max gathering sizes. We're still waiting for clarification on that, on really what we'll be able to offer for Ontario Championships. But we will offer something, whether or not it's at, you know, two or three locations, whether or not it's at six or seven locations. We're going to wait and see kind of what comes through, especially for step two. Um, one thing we are pretty much looking at though, I won't say it with 100% confidence right now, but it will most likely be a one day event rather than a typical two day. Obviously, with our time constraints, even with our regular beach tour season, with it only taking place on half day, one day event is probably the most we want to do. The one thing that will change as well is obviously our qualification for Ontario Championships. Typically, it's been three events, but because we're starting a lot later in the season, it is only athletes only need to participate in one OVA event in the age category you wish to play at OCs. And we've been talking about grass volleyball and introducing grass volleyball to pretty much all OVA members, not just necessarily the beach, but just even to give our indoor athletes a place to play and get some touches. We were looking at a league model, unfortunately, just because of the delay in reopening of the province. We're looking more at still running some tournaments. So we're still talking to quite a few municipalities about renting space on weekends to run some events for different age groups, different, you know, formats in terms of is it twos and fours, is it sixes? So please stay tuned on that information. And that's about it for the beach update. Like I said, we've, we've covered most of the information in the last two town halls. Obviously, there's a couple of things that have changed since our last town hall, which is the Ontario Championships qualification and dates and the 16 month age category. So we just kind of wanted to get through all of that information. So if there's any questions, Alicia, I saw you were answering some, but is there any more in the chat?
Yeah, there's just one question about since beach provincials is moving later, will that affect resigning dates and trial windows? Just concerning periodization and rest and recovery for athletes?
No, sorry, I did put that in the chat though, but no. So the dates for resigning for indoor haven't been changed. We talked with the chairs of the IVDC about it and they weren't concerned with everything. So yes, right now, nothing has changed.
This one's for Sue's. Any idea which age groups will be playing on which weekend for beach provincials?
Wonderful question. We're still trying to work through it. We should have some information. Hopefully, by the time registration goes up next week.
And then one came in for the tournaments. Can we choose where our kids play or are we assigned a district based on where we live?
Not sure. So there's no restrictions in travel for the province. So no, you could with beach tour, you're, you pick the event based on where it is. So you pick the specific location and venue based on what works with your schedule.
I think that's it for questions. Yeah, there's nothing else coming in. Is there anything else you want to add?
Oh, it's just the slide. Joanne, do you want to share the slide about the upcoming town halls? Because I think it just got removed.
I'm there now?
Yep.
Yeah, so on July 5, we're planning a town hall for step two return to play. That's obviously tentative. That's obviously tentative on whether or not step two happens on time. And then on July 12th, there will be another town hall for indoor presenting the what's new in coach eligibility policy. And then further in the summer, there will be a club prep session and another return to play session for step three. Other than that, I think we're okay. We don't have any questions. We'll be posting the questions down our Q as well as the recording of this town hall and the PowerPoint presentation online. So if you know someone that would find this information useful, please feel free to share it. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact any one of us and we'd be happy to help you. Other than that, thank you everyone for joining us tonight. We hope to see everyone back on the courts soon.